I'd like to call to order the regular meeting agenda and the hybrid meeting of October 11, 2023, 6:00 PM at Town Hall, First Floor Conference Room 302 Main Street, Old Saver, Connecticut. Could we please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance? Are you ready?
I put the Pledge of Allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic of which stands one nation, under God, indivisible, the liberty and justice of our world.
Could I just ask everyone to one moment of silence for Israel? Okay, thank you.
Thank you very much.
Roll call. Charles Gayden Shear? Yes. Kevin Danby? Not present. Jacqueline Press?
Here.
Alfred Wilcox?
Here.
Aaron Caldwell?
Here.
Matt Diamond?
Here.
Frank Keeney?
Very good, here.
He was.
Well done, well done, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you very much. We're going to continue with the public hearing of 23/24-6C Jessica Alazio. But I'd just like to state, we had left it open to public comment and we did receive a letter from Gateway. We did receive a letter from Gateway. And basically, to summarize, they were very, very pleased. First, I'm asking, did everybody read the Gateway letter?
Yes.
In summary, Gateway was very pleased with their relocation of the pool. Gateway was very pleased with the increase to the repairium buffer. And by meeting all the requests of Gateway, I think we're ready to just go directly into a motion, close public comment and go directly into a motion.
Is your representative here?
Yes.
Do you have anything to add?
You have anything to add?
No, we heard your comments, went back to Gateway, we heard their comments, we talked with them at the meeting, we made additional buffer improvements as a result of that meeting. We replied back to you and here we are.
So based on that, I would like to, I'm going to close public comment and would someone be like to make a motion in regards to this?
Is there anyone online?
Nope, there's nobody online. Could I get a motion?
I don't know if we approve the application. 22/23, I'm sorry, 23-24-6C. On the ground that the imposition of the setback requirements after the House has already been constructed perpetuates a hardship right there for this perfectly lawful improvement that is a lawful amenity to the House. And having satisfied the Gateway concerns, I think it illboos us to second guess the Gateway Commission on this.
And could I just add a friendly amendment to that? Could we also add into that the municipal coastal site plan review?
Yes.
Approval of that. Do I get a second?
I'll second it.
All those in favor? Oh, sorry.
I just, Joe, I just want to say thank you and congratulations.
You're welcome.
You guys heard the comments, listened and your work and your due diligence and thank you.
Yeah, I think if I could say one quick thing too, I appreciate your patience on this and your reasonableness too, because their initial requests were can't you put the pool in the front yard? Can't you do a little dump pool, the daughter swims? And that doesn't work for them and can you put in 300 feet of 15 foot wide buffer? And all those things were somewhat unreasonable, but this commission I always view as reasonable. And the Gateway saw that and they allowed us to keep the buffer. We made it a little bit bigger, we made it 10 feet downhill pool instead of five. We continued to five along that north side, but we think that's reasonable and doable for the property.
And stated for the record, seated for that were Charles Gayden, Jacqueline Press, Alfred Wilcock, Aaron Caldwell, Frank Keeney. So, and Chuck, I said that already.
So Frank is seated for the optimum.
Yes.
And Chuck made the motion.
And Chuck made the motion.
And Aaron Caldwell.
And Aaron Caldwell.
And we have a vote or not?
Yes.
All those in favor? Very welcome.
Thank you.
Now, seated for application 23-24-10C will be myself, Jacqueline Press, Alfred Wilcock, Aaron Caldwell, and Frank Keeney. Who will be representing 23/24-10C? How do you pronounce that? Gilda Beeman? Linda, sorry, Linda Beeman, request of variance of par 10.7.1/10.7.2 nonconforming enlargement slash change in par 68.1.2B9 tidal wetland setback, 50 foot required, 28.7 to deck, 34.9 to sunroom, 32.9 to septic tank, and 21.8 to D box proposed of the regulation to allow for the construction of a 13.6 foot by 14 sunroom and 115 square foot deck at 367 Main Street, Unit C41, MAP 22/lot 251-C41, Residence A District Coastal Area Management Zone. Action. Open, continue, and close by 11:08, 2023, NLT 11:14, 2023.
Representing the applicant is Joe Ren. So I'm there in Indigo here in town. And thank you for hearing this application this evening. We're all familiar with Vanberry Crossing, there are about 50 standalone single-family condominium units in Vanberry Crossing. Recently, they prepared an entire site survey with a request of Conneville, Saber, just to see where they were with overall site coverage and overall floor area and total floor area. And they're well below the maximum. So there is a master list, I think we submitted this in part of the application, there's a master list of all the units in there, 2 through 50 essentially. I don't know if every single number is in there, but many of them are. And if you have that list, if not, I can give you this one, but it identifies the existing accessory structures, decks, sunrooms, porches, things that the units have. And then it also includes proposed accessory structures, deck, sunrooms, and so forth, with the new coverage, the new GFA totals, this was all prepared by, it's all the totals of the GFA and the coverage were presented, this was all accepted by town and the Vanberry Crossing Association. We are talking about units 41 and 42. And 41 on this list says the existing accessory structure, no, actually 41 and 42, both of them have full decks along the back, which they do currently. And then proposed accessory structures, they both say a sunroom. So what the owner is proposing now formally are a sunroom on each unit over the existing deck area. So there's really no increase in the footprint, especially on Unit 2. You can see mostly the deck, the existing deck is under this with maybe a small fliver expansion. On 41, the reason why we're here tonight, putting this sunroom where it makes sense off of the current living spaces over the existing deck to replace some of that lost deck, they're adding a small deck on the west side of that addition. Since the septic tank is currently right on the edge of the deck and nonconforming, they're moving the septic tank further from the wetlands, but not more than 50 feet away. And then of course, they need a distribution box to connect back into the existing leaching system, which is shown here in gray for each unit. Those leaching systems are not changing since the tank is nonconforming, it's the only reason why we have to move the tank on Unit 41. This development was, I believe, in the late 70s or so, early 80s, somewhere in that timeframe. And since then, the tidal wetland buffer has come into play. We have tidal wetlands and inland wetlands on the site, they were gold flagged and they're both identified on the map. Obviously, more water work are the tidal wetlands, I highlighted them here in green. And then you can see the other line in the gray shade, that's inland wetland. So after, of course, successful getting the variances that are required here, we have to go to inland wetlands as well for pool. Since we're completely within 100 foot review area, which is way out here, essentially all the buildings are at that. So for 42, we meet all required setbacks, cover GFA, or more than 50 feet away from tidal wetland. But for 41, where that was built back then before the regulation and building over an existing structure with a small expansion and actually a betterment to the septic system, those things occur or partially occur within the tidal wetland buffer, so we need variances. Any, in your regulations, anything, even a septic tank or a D box or grading, clearing, anything requires a variance in that buffer, so that's why we gave you all those specific dimensions to the tank, the D box, the deck, sunroom, and so forth. So that is everything in a nutshell. Of course, the variances that we need are expansion of a nonconforming structure and because of the tidal wetland setback and less than 50 feet to the tidal wetlands. Of course, we have silt fence in here, even though there's not going to be a lot of ground disturbance, it's an above ground deck. And then the small sunroom, which are, sunrooms are essentially, they were 14 by 14, something around that, those dimensions relatively small. Part of the foundation is a crawl space foundation. But the portion that's hatched here, furthest out away from the house, is on a pier foundation. They didn't want the whole addition on a pier foundation because of animals under the house and moisture and everything else. But we had to do the partial pier foundation because of the existing leaching system, we have to be at least 10 feet away to a continuous foundation wall. So we couldn't have a continuous foundation wall here within 10 feet of the leaching system, so we had to do piers. So basically, the construction is over existing structures, it's mostly above grade with minor excavation for a partial crawl space. All the rest of the construction is on piers and mostly above grade. We don't see any adverse impact to anything, especially the tidal wetland, which is the reason why we're here. All to this brush line here, you can see the curved brush line is all lawn area. So it's currently maintained, mowed, fertilized grass, so we're just adding the deck over that grass area. But it does require variance, so that's why we're confirming this. We have everything in the application, I already mentioned the variances, we have the hardship in the application. Mostly the hardship is based on, you know, these houses were built in their current location before renovations were in place. And now we're trying to add on an existing structure in that area, it doesn't make sense to put it here, even though we still would be partially in there because there's a chimney. You can see the small rectangle on each unit, that's where the chimney is. I believe we also provided photographs in the application, so you can see the back of the units and our structural rendering.
I have a question. Because when I look at, when I look at B42 and C41, is there any reason why? We understand the sunroom, but see how you have a deck to the left, so you're encroaching in. Is there any reason like on, you can't just approach away from the wetlands? Like, why can't we have a much larger deck to the right? Because that, now we're going away from the wetlands and it, and it's very similar to the house on the right, where it does corner and go around the chimney. So I don't see why we couldn't do that. And if you really feel the need to have something, some type of area, you could have steps that would go down to a pervious paper. Because rather than encroach into the, you know, into that, into that buffer area, we could just move it slightly away and I think you would satisfy a lot of concerns. And you get a much larger deck out of it.
I am not sure of the answer to that question, I'm not sure why they didn't expand on the east versus the west.
Because I looked back.
The chimney is there and I know there's quite a bit of landscape in that area.
But I'm just making the suggestion because that way we're not encroaching into the area of concern. And this way, I think, I think if we did that, we would be in a much more favorable light, but I don't want to tell you what to do.
Right. Yeah, I mean, the way I view these applications, similar to the last application, is the lawn currently, the lawn is very close to the tidal wetlands now, so we're not getting any closer than the lawn already is. I mean, yes, it's the deck that the rainwater can go through, the upper grade, to me, is kind of nondiscrepancy.
But we would feel more comfortable. I know, I can't speak for the rest of the board, but I know I would feel more comfortable if we were shifting to the right, out of the area. And in fact, I'm actually offering a larger deck as opposed to two small decks. And you could have, if you chose to, you could have steps going down to a patio. And I think that, and then I don't see that as an issue. I mean, I don't know if you need to go back and discuss this with your, the applicant.
What were the benefits of the patio game?
Well, if you felt the need to have some type of deck on the left, you know, going out there, you tell me. Obviously, they wanted deck on both sides, so I'm not telling them they can't have it, I'm just making the suggestion that if it was a step down to, you know, to a pervious patio and/or you could, in addition, if you chose to, you could extend the deck outward, which I would think would make them more pleasing to have a larger deck than two small decks. But that, I'm not telling you what to do, I'm just making a suggestion.
Yeah, as far as the patio goes, I mean, they're not here, they're out of town, so they couldn't be here, but I certainly could call them and talk to them about that. I understand your concern, even though the portions of the septic, the D box and so forth are closer, the lawn is closer. The patio, I can see, because of, you know, Saber, that's not a great patio, then when we consider it a structure.
Exactly.
But we would still have to show the distance to it.
Correct.
Because it's a disturbance in the buffer. So there's really not much difference.
But I'm just, it's basically an offer right there that we would think about, but as opposed to putting structure there. But if you, if they chose not to, they could just put structure away. And you can call them if you'd like to discuss it.
Yeah.
Or you can come back, I mean, I don't want to hold you up.
Could I ask one question?
Sure, fire away.
Maybe a silly question, but I don't see on the actual structure of the house, like a floor plan. What happens is the, is the deck, is it coming out off of the kitchen, is that coming off of the living room or?
This is kind of like the extended kitchen area, I was in there one time based on memories until we were talking about just suggesting that you have it here.
Yeah.
And so what's there?
I don't know, I didn't walk through that, it's probably a bedroom.
If you looked at your. Here, I'll show you what is, yeah. Right here. This is what's there.
Yeah, this is quiet.
Yeah.
The chimney?
And that, Joe brought that up earlier, that would be.
The chimney.
An issue on the right hand side is that big chimney.
Right, so this is the chimney right here?
Yes.
So you have the patio where the chimney is?
Right, basically, there's one shrub. It's not even, and.
None.
It's right there.
They're taking this out.
No, they have to take that, no, they have to take it out.
Yeah, because here's what the drawing.
Yeah, well, maybe the drawing didn't depict the actual.
But there, here's their, here's the window right here.
Right, they'd be budding right up to the shrub right here.
And this, this is the added.
This is all coming out, right, yeah, this, no, this is going to stay because in theory, that it's going on top of the deck.
And going on each side.
On each side, yeah. So I think that that would make a lot of sense to be perfectly honest, going to the right. And I think that could possibly be favorable at the application. But I'm just speaking for myself.
Yeah, so if we could pause, I guess, want to give them.
Sure. Why don't we take a, we'll take a little recess.
Okay.
And give you an opportunity, so this way you can, you don't have to come back.
Certainly. I also don't want to hold this gentleman up, he's the only other one in the room, so maybe if you consider.
We'll give you, we'll give you, let's see what you can do. Yeah, so let's see what you can, we'll give a, we'll go for a 10 minute recess because we're doing what, we don't have time.
But that was nice and beautiful.
Yes.
Of course.
Alright, so yeah.
So I'll just run things more, so it would get, you're saying you would get rid of this one?
Yes, absolutely.
And we would be over here.
And we enlarge it, we just enlarge that size because we're moving away from the repairium buffer.
Right, but if they were going to put a barbecue grill out somewhere over here, it would be like within the confines of the house, whereas over here it'd be like in the repairium buffer, but the smoke would be going out over the marsh.
Hypothetically, yes, okay. But I just think it, rather than having two small decks, one larger deck, just like you have.
Yeah, no, the deck on this side is around the chimney.
Exactly, that's what I thought.
And the addition can't be around the chimney.
No.
No, no, but the, but the deck can be around it. We're not asking you to move the structure, okay? We're just asking to continue, if they really want that much deck, continue the deck around the chimney similarly to the home to the right.
And that's exactly the question I will ask.
Okay.
Yeah. We're going to take a 10 minute recess.
And if you can't reach them, just report back.
Yes.
Oh, I will, okay. Thank you.
Well, that's. We're coming out of our break a little early.
So I just spoke to the owner, Arthur Beeman, and he said, he said, good idea, we'll put all the deck on red side.
Okay, bye, thank you very much. Does anybody have any other questions of the applicant? Okay. Hearing none, I'd like to open it to public comment. Is there anybody in the public that would like to speak for or against this application? Anybody raising their hands? Hearing none, I'm going to close public comment. Open it to discussion amongst members? Hearing none, would someone like to make a motion?
I'm going to prove that we approved. Application number. On the ground that the property was built before the tidal wetland setback was implemented and to apply it retrospectively to prevent this very small addition, I think affects the hardship and especially in light of the owner's willingness to reduce the intrusion by relocating the deck. And also, I think it's worth noting that by changing the location of the septic, I regard that as much like reducing a nonconformity.
Correct.
And this can alternately be approved on that ground as well.
May I make a friendly amendment?
Of course.
Could we also include the municipal coastal site plan review?
Yes, of course, especially because that's been signed off on.
Perfect. Can I get a second to that? All those in favor? Aye, motion passed.
Thank you very much.
Thank you. It's going to be pretty too, with the sunroom out there.
Excellent. Down to our last one. Last but not least, application 23/24-11 Cornfield Point Association requested variance of par 24.5.5A. First of all, I stated, seated for this applicant will be Charles Gayden, Jacqueline Press, Alfred Wilcock, Aaron Caldwell, and Frank Keeney. Again. 23/24-11 Cornfield Point Association requested variance of par 24.5.5A accessory structure, street line setback slash 35 feet required, 5 feet proposed, and par 24.5.5C accessory structure, other line setbacks, 10 foot required, 5 foot proposed, and the zoning regulations to predict the relocation of an existing 1,120 square foot shed and construction of a new 240 square foot shed at 27 Town Beach Road, MAP 3/lot 147, comma Residence A District Coastal Area Management Zone. Who will be representing the application?
I'm here to comment on it, that represents.
Is it on, are there persons on that? Can you raise your hand again? I don't know. Okay. I'm promoting you to panelist.
Hello?
Yeah.
Okay. Hi, my name is Lou Terry. Can you hear me?
Yes, we can, Lou.
Thank you very much, thank you for hearing us. I'm the Vice President of Cornfield Point Beach Association, the one that filled out the application with much help from the zoning enforcement office, get me through this. I'm here to answer any questions that you may have. We've had a shed there, the 112 square foot shed for 10, 12 years. We've, over the years, have done many improvements, bought more equipment to help improve the comfort and the safety of our residents at the beach. We have a golf cart, we have a power wash thing, we put all our snow fence that we use up for keeping the stand out in the winter for the residents. And all that equipment, we just can't get in the shed, we were having it outside the existing shed, it became an eyesore. That gentleman there brought it to our attention, we tried to clean up the area as much as possible, but we just need to be able to put that stuff into a larger shed that will make it much easier for us. The other thing is that there is no other location on the property that you look at at the surveyor's map that we could locate it. Yeah, so we did look at it, otherwise you'd be encroaching on the basketball court or you'd be encroaching into the playground area. Yes, sir. We understand that. I'd like to, so are there any questions of the applicant? Because I'd like to hear public comment on this. Hearing no questions of the applicant, I'd like to open it to public comment. Could you please stand and state your name?
Sure. My name is Ed Dunfries, I'm a resident at 23 Seabreeze Road, I've been a resident there for 70 plus years, so I've seen a lot of transition to that area. And I'm here tonight to support the application for variance to construct a new clubhouse. However, I'd like to call attention to the fact that this is an unusual situation, that this is, this is the rear of the property of the clubhouse, but it is the front of the property for residents on Seabreeze Road. What's happened, what had happened over the course of a few years, since the existing tool shed has been there, it has become a collection point for all the materials that were either not being used or unwanted at the time. So it became an issue, a front yard issue for the residents and the street, that there were things, many trash cans. I did bring that to the attention of the association last summer and they have put up a.
And they have put up barriers on the fence to screen that. But uh what I would uh like to call the intention to the uh the commission is that. Uh if they, there is a new shed there, uh that there be some recognition. Uh that the store is the outside storage, which they're looking to address with this application. Uh not the not be accumulated again uh with the with other materials stored to the outside. Even now, there are some rusty barrels that have suddenly appeared just in the past couple of weeks. Uh as storage in the existing uh area, which isn't visible from the street or from the side yard. But as I said, I'm in support of the uh the improvement uh and the recognition of the association. Uh to keep the area neat and clean. And and of course, of course, for the residents on the street. Uh we're also interested in maintaining the uh the use uh of the of the uh. Basketball court and the other facilities that are there as well as the the other property.
Well, thank you for for, because we were looking, we we were very interested in what the uh the residents of the area had to say. Since this was a clubhouse and it's and it supports the uh the 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 community of that area. And we didn't want to create any hardships to the basketball court and or the playground area, but we were concerned about the abutting. Uh the abutting neighbors. Is there anyone else that would like to speak for or against? Hearing none, I'd like to close public comment, but I would like to make a motion. My motion for. Twenty three slash twenty four dash eleven. The the hardship is the fact that it's a basket, we're we're trying to maintain the basketball court. In the playground area for the community. However, we are relocating a shed and building a larger shed. I would like to make this motion contingent that this property, that these sheds can only be on this property. As long as it is a community facility and not a residence. Does anyone like to make a friendly?
Are you going to address his concern about?
Oh, I'm sorry. And that because we're enlarging the sheds, there should be no exterior materials. Stored. Around the sheds or within the setbacks.
I'll second that.
All those in favor? Sorry, hang on, discussion, discussion. Yes. What would you like to say?
I would like to say that when I first looked at this one, I was very troubled because there's plenty of space within the building lines. For the any shed that they lay with reasonably wide. And then I realized, well, this is a playground.
Right.
And a park or playground is another permissible use. And I like to focus on the functionality.
Absolutely.
And I think the motion captures that.
Thank you.
And uh that's why I I intend to vote in favor of your motion.
Thank you. So I I have a second on that motion?
Can can I ask Mr. Lewis a question?
Sure.
Mr. Lewis?
Uh Perry, Lewis is my first name, but thank you.
We've already closed public comment. We can't ask.
I can't ask.
No, we can't ask a question. I apologize. I, so, well, unfortunately, because I closed public comment, we can't ask a question of the applicant. So based on that, you could add something to the motion if you'd like.
No, I think you've managed to cover it.
But so based on that, we have a second. Could I get a vote on that?
Do you need to do anything with the ghost wire?
Yeah, uh is there a C on that? There is no C on it.
I just went, I heard it with the other.
You would see a C next to it, okay? They're not doing anything. Based on that, could could I get a a vote? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Nay. The motion pass.
Thank you very much for your consideration, and we are in full support of the recommendations that you made. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, I would like to now. New business. I just want to make sure that everybody uh received the email from Chris Costa. Regarding the uh legal requirements, procedures, and roles, and responsibilities, and fundamentals of breeding plants. It's a uh class that's uh that's being offered by continuing education. You should have all received it. Uh by email, I just wanted to mention it. With that, uh could I get, I've read the minutes. Does anyone have an issue with the minutes?
Well, they were well done.
Yeah, I did too. Could I get a motion to approve the minutes?
So.
Uh can I get a second? All those in favor? Aye. Correspondence and announcements, there are none. Uh committee representatives and staff reports, there are none. I make a motion to adjourn. Can I get a second on that? All those in favor? Aye.
Well, you were glad to discuss the memorandum.
Yeah, oh, sorry. Oops, I apologize. I was gonna discuss the memorandum. I apologize. My fault. I under, under, I guess that would have to be, if I had to back up, that would be under.
New business.
New business. I I sent a letter to uh zoning regarding rooftop decks. And I felt that uh that we needed to improve the language on rooftop decks. To be, so we had a better understanding of what constituted a rooftop deck, what was approval, what was not. Based on that, I I received a letter from uh from zoning, basically stating that rooftop decks weren't allowed. Now, my interpretation from from what uh I received from zoning was that. I felt that if a property was completely compliant, meaning the structure was within the buildable envelope. Okay, the lot size was correct, that there was, and that we we know the regulations regarding a half story. If those were all met, we should allow, we should be allowed to have a rooftop deck. So and I stated that, and I'm going to write another letter regarding that, that I felt that was my interpretation. Of uh of what they were basically stating, because if everything is compliant. I don't understand why we can't have a a a a second half story rooftop deck. I just have a problem with that. And I'm going to continue to move much forward on that. And I I hope everybody saw the email that I sent out. I said, we're just starting. We're gonna continue on this.
Yeah.
Because I felt that we 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 work for the people of the town of Old Sabre, and I felt that if everything was. Within the zoning regulations, I didn't see how that, I it seemed unreasonable. And I, that's what I wanted to report, and that's what I basically stated in my in my email that I sent out. So this is far from over. Excellent. Yes.
Under the zoning laws, as I understand it, the zoning board of appeals corrects. Misinterpretations by the zoning enforcement officer.
Correct.
And that's our job.
That's right. That's right. That's correct.
And since there is nothing in the code, the zoning code now, that even speaks to rooftop decks. I don't see how the conclusion can be justified that. Amending the regulation to allow this deck is not consistent with the purpose and intent of the zoning regulations. Uh there's nothing in the regulation that disallows the deck.
And and then, and then when they did talk about it, they talked about. Or encroaching into setbacks, they talked about uh, they talked about lot size. They talked about the dangers of the rooftop deck. But I think if we, my my personal interpretation. And I cannot speak for the entire board was that if all those other things were. Were 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 correct and in place, I did not understand why we could not have a rooftop deck.
Well, especially if you consider uh that if you have a rooftop deck, it's functionally on a third level.
Right.
And it's looking at a roof. It's not looking at a bedroom.
Correct. Yeah, but but keeping in mind, I thought, well, I could understand on some of the smaller four thousand square foot lots. Where we have a tendency where one home is basically over another home and you're looking, we've had that issue before looking into windows. But in a case where we have. A legitimate lot size, we're within the buildable envelope of where we have fifteen, 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 twenty five from the street. That and we we're not over the twenty percent coverage. And we're not over the forty percent build living space. I didn't, I I felt it was an unreasonable hardship. And I and I and I wanted to make sure that everybody, you know, heard that. Because I felt that they did not address our concerns.
Cool.
I think we're in for a fight.
Thanks for explaining that.
But there's only board of appeals.
Damn it.
But I I don't I don't disagree. But I think, I think we're in.
Right. But we, so we're 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 at it now. And we still haven't gotten an acceptable answer from zoning. So I will continue moving us forward. With that, I I I'd like to make a motion to adjourn. All those in favor?
Aye.